Uh, I'm gonna start off with the pony of the boards that we. Press some overlook some on last council meeting with that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, first of all, I'm gonna bring out, uh, to put Pete Long on the board of adjustment. And this then be October seventeen. And also bring out Ronald Ward at W D A R P to the planning commission board. And this then be October two thousand eighteen. And also, I'm going to reverse the library board appointments. Someone's gonna come out seventeen, some gonna be coming eighteen. When we go to the regular council meeting, I'll call the names and we have to do each individual, so I bring that up. Uh, the city hall has got all those lights running and it's very pretty tonight, but police department don't have any lights. To shine on the building, make it look good. So I had the chief to give me an estimate from Lady Electric and he gave me an estimate today for thousand nineteen dollars. A thousand ninety-one dollars. So what he's gonna do, he's gonna put about two or three spot lights. We already have a lot coming out for the, uh, light bulb. So he's gonna come in from there and put some spotlight on the building, make it look good enough.
Can I ask a question right there?
Sure.
Can we, uh, try to add this into this LED lighting?
I think it's ready as LED lighting.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not sure.
Well, just, you know, like in the whole contract at one time.
Sure, yeah.
But we'll, we'll look at that, we'll look at doing that.
But I'm gonna bring it up to pass it to now while he can go ahead and do it, while he's here doing it. Be cheaper on us. Uh, I've been saying this for five, two, three meetings, that we showed on the police officers. Uh, the, our main police officer that been there with the service for fifteen, sixteen years. Everybody knows him, Tim Devon, he had surgery and his doctor told him he's gonna be out at least six months. So, uh, we don't know really, it's gonna be six months or longer than that. So, we're gonna be sure and we gonna hire another one tonight. His name is Stephen Long, Stephen, if you wanna stand up and, uh, introduce you. Stephen is the resident of Ransville, he has been a certified police officer for three years. Stephen is a long time resident of Ransville. He has career at the Jordan Police Department. And then he went to Notice Our Law Enforcement Academy where he, uh, classed the Secretary of the Treasury. And he was the second in his firearm ability. And he graduated in the top ten academy in his class. He has since worked in with the Fortland Police Department, which would not recruit him, he recruit us. So, I want to keep that on the record, that without pulling officers from other towns. Anyway, uh, uh, his level is senior patrolman of the nine chief and where he also assisted with F T O training program. Whatever F T O is, what is it?
Uh, Viltrean Officer, sorry.
Okay. He has received extensive training in multiple area of the law enforcement. And he wants to serve our, uh, city, uh, where he grew up and he is calling it home. If you want to say anything, Stephen.
Yes, sir, I just, uh, really appreciate the opportunity to work here. I've, I grew up here, I've always loved it, I've always wanted to be a police here. Uh, I've, I've worked with Chief Smith before, Fort Wayne, uh, we've worked together good, we kinda have the same mentality. On work ethic and everything, I feel like I could be a good fit, do good for the community. Kinda get more into the community police and not just, uh, you know, ratting figures, putting everybody in jail, that's kinda not really my thing anymore. Just more be involved with the community, be a real police officer and, you know, just do as good as I can and hopefully keep moving forward. So I really appreciate the opportunity to work here.
And I feel like with, uh, Stephen coming on the board, we're gonna have very, very strong police department.
Sir.
The way we're looking at it. And, uh, if things goes well and we're still gonna do our, uh, program like we talked about on the, uh, senior citizens or seniors, really, not citizen.
So we're gonna be full staff?
We're gonna be, well, with Stephen, that gives us eleven officers. And full staff really is twelve, based on our number of, uh, people that live in town. But, we, I think we can get back with eleven to, to, uh, ten gets back. Right now without team, really, it's ten. So, uh, we're trying to get back with ten. Y'all got any question?
Ready?
Uh. I believe that's all I got tonight.
Mr. Bob.
First thing, uh, I wanna talk a little bit about is that our streets up and down our four lanes are bad, getting littered. And, uh, I've been talking to Bijon about maybe getting the state to get us four signs coming on our main highways. And, uh, talking with the chief, I'd like us to start exercising our five hundred dollar fines for people littering on our four lanes. Because when we start to mow, it's gonna really be a lot worse. So, I'd like to work on that with you. We've already, Bijon's got us some signs coming.
I talked to the guys in charge of this today and they say it's got to order those signs. And normally these signs is built in Montgomery by prisoners, so it's gonna take about six to eight weeks to get them. Once we get them, we're gonna put them on.
It'll be on all of our four lanes, see if you wanna see the limits. And I would lack of the officers to start watching. And I mean, all you gotta do is go out here and go back towards, come to more garden, miss it. Look at.
It is.
You know, and, you know, it, it's the five hundred dollar fine, but on top of that, you're looking at court costs. So it's gonna be about six hundred and seven, about seven hundred and eighty dollars. So, but, but on the other hand, when we go through the mow, it's gonna be, look like a penny up there every moment, so. We gotta start controlling our little bit better.
The trust will tear up the mower too also, because you don't know really what you run into when you mow.
I'd like if you get with Mr. Harry and inform your officers to be watching for that.
How they person.
The next thing I have is, we're, uh.
But we came right in to take it till we put the sign up, so.
Yeah. Next thing I have, when you, we're gonna purchase a transit to where we can, uh, shoot the levels. Uh, the, in ditches, install on our tiles and everything, that's nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. I'll be bringing that to you. Also, uh, I have, uh, Sam here tonight, I'm work. There he is.
I know I lost that much weight.
We're gonna redo it. Sam, who's come up and talk about this ordinance a little bit real quick? What we're changing to and what we're gonna be doing in the future.
Okay. Oh. We're looking at, uh, ordinance on streets as far as said divisions. Requirements for, uh, driveway width, uh, pavement width, the, uh, drainage pipe within, uh, under the road and also under the driveway. Like putting this little pay pit wall on to help with safety and to keep the field material up there. And, uh, the right of way is changing from, or proposed to change, all this is proposed, from fifty feet to sixty feet, which gives us a little more room for utilities and all of that, uh.
You don't think fifty feet is an option?
No.
And this fifty feet is what the city's been for a long time, but if we go to sixty feet, then we match up with the county and you don't have fifty feet in the city and sixty in the county. And it's just back and forth.
Are there no county changes sixty?
County sixty.
State it depends, hundred. Yeah, highway, that's hundred.
Go ahead, Sam.
So, uh, the, the, the pipe, uh, we recommend you use concrete pipe, but you can use the, uh, high-density polyethylene pipe, it's called H D P E, it's the double wall pipe, has the smoothness on the inside, it's corrugated and all of that. You can use that also under the, the road, because the county, that's permissible in county. So I've looked at their regulations and been going off of that. Uh, as far as the driveway, you know, uh, this comes into play over a period of time after ten or twenty years after you resurface the road and the driveway is right up at the road. You put a couple inches asphalt on it, then it bumps off down to the driveway. Now, B O T sets up where they saw off a couple feet of that, then you can tie your pavement in. So we're proposing to you to stop your concrete driveway, say two feet from the edge of the pavement. And that way, you can transition from the edge of the pavement to the drive. Now, the drive needs to be practically the level, you know, where it's coming up there. But a- as the road is built up, we can taper off down to it. And that, you know, when you put asphalt on concrete, it lasts for a little while, but eventually, you know, break up and you've gotta, you'll have a bad bump there. So, uh, that proposal is in there, that's, uh, the every one we've previously had. And, uh, the utilities as far as, uh, water lines and, and, uh, all of that, we've got specs in there for that. We are requiring you to stub out under the street and not cut the street, you know, act it's paved and everything. Pretty much know where your water meter's gonna be, you know, for your lots and all of that, so put a conduit on there. So I think the water company, they can jack under the road, but, uh, we recommend you free to put a conduit in there so that, uh, and have it noted on the map so we can know where it's located and what utility company can, can do that. And, uh, we'll be requiring the, the property owner to, uh, pay for preparing the deed and also recording the map that's giving it to the, to the city, furnish the city. Got the deed and map at no cost to the city. Paying that to the city. It's, uh, city's not in the road building business, we're in the maintenance business. And, uh, we just think it's important that when we inherit a road, that we inherit a good road. We don't need to inherit a road that we're gonna have to come back and spend, you know, taxpayers' money on in, in a few years. And everybody wants a good road, it really helps your neighborhood and increases the value of your property and, uh, we think these are reasonable, we don't think there's anything in here that's out in left field. So. Anybody got any questions about that?
Also, you've, uh, added in to where we'll be all of our driveway tiles will be on the forty-five. And, uh, that's part of the regulation. But if you're going up down the main roads instead of, um, the state highways, you'll seal all those now. It's forty-five instead of just drop off. Uh, several different reasons, it keeps the tile from stopping up. But I think one of the biggest factors is if somebody was thrown off of it, uh, they can cor- correct it back up on the road with a forty-five. They can't do that with a drop-off tile. So, that'll help us on our drains, 'cause we have tiles up the, on big, come big rains. That'll help us on them with them cement barriers as well.
And there's some, uh, standard drawings that B O T has, that's, we reference those in there as to how you fill those. And we have a typical section about the right of way and the width of the road bed, which are three feet on each side and twenty-foot pave, which that hasn't changed. Do a proper base draw with a cross at twenty-six feet.
I guess I have a question, maybe not directly to Sam, just to the other councils, but do y'all think this might discourage uh, future homeowners, people that's gonna build houses or, oh, buy property, so buy, except if we encourage.
Well, if you're in the building, if you're in construction, it's pretty simple, you're a developer.
No.
Uh, if you're developing, I mean, you're gonna, it's your responsibility, it's like Sam says, it's our responsibility to maintain it. It's there to get them to up the codes to where we don't have to go back and fix them all again.
I understand, I was just asking, you know. I was doing this.
I think it's just a, 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 another great starting point to make our town look a little bit better and up to speed, in my opinion.
I've got contact with Dave.
Sorry. I've spent just a little bit extra, but maybe look, you know, maybe look better, so.
I've got a contact with Dave's living in, talking subdivision, I said, you know, be aware, you know, we're looking at changing them, whatever the city decides, so.
What else do you have, sir?
You asked me to look at the intersection of, uh, I call it Church Avenue, some folks call it Church Street, but I think it's Church Avenue. Up at the intersection of Carlisle Road where, uh, it's a nightmare to merge from Carlisle Road out to Highway seventy-five and, uh, I have reached one of those birthdays, it's got the big number up front and a little zero out at the end. And, uh, I don't have certain reflexes as I used to have, uh, forty years ago, but, uh, you know, it, roads are not only designed for senior citizens, but they're also designed for teenagers. You gotta have visibility if you're gonna see approaching traffic and, uh, we have a situation there, you know, this house real close to the pavement. I, I talked to that gentleman when we were, uh, paving Carlisle Road and he says, well, they keep me awake at night. And I said, yeah, you're sleeping out in the road. And I said, they're gonna keep you awake at night. Anyway, uh, uh, and I talked to some other folks that travel that road and try to get out in the morning at, say, seven o'clock when you're trying to get to work and, you know, it's, call that rush hour. And, uh, so I'm coming down Carlisle Road and, uh, I've got Church Avenue coming from my right and they have the right of way. And, uh, the people that live on Church Avenue, they get, they get, keep crossing thirty-five or turning or whatever. If I'm sitting on Carlisle, I'm sitting there waiting till all the traffic is cleared on Church Avenue so I can pull out in Church Avenue and approach Highway thirty, thirty-five, seventy-five. So that I can cross the road or access the highway of why. And, uh, it seems to me, just from looking at it and thinking about it, we could put up a stop sign up there and I've looked at the location and I'll get with Mr. Dobbins on that. It's about even with the end of that house there so that you can, you can see people on Carlisle and, and all of that. And, uh, if we put up a stop sign there and, uh, we'll have to sign it good and get it on the news and let people know, because there're gonna be a few people that, uh, out of habit, they're not gonna stop, they've been coming through there for fifty years and never stopped, they're not gonna stop this time.
Still have that to shavies right there.
So, uh, uh, anyway, uh, but I would recommend that, put up a stop sign there. And I'll get with Mr. Dobbins to make sure we get the right size, I think it'd be about a twenty-four when it began.
Yeah.
Something like that. And we need to also.
They'll be patrolling for a while.
Yeah. And we need to put on, put up, at below the stop sign, two-way stop, you know, let them people know that there's two people stopping. We don't have that where Church and, uh, B F W Road merge out there, it's just two stop signs. But I think we need to put two-way stop on that too, you know, you got basic signs.
You're not about waiting and sitting there.
Mm-hmm.
You come down. Oh, yes, sir.
Well, if I was the police chief, I talked to him back. When we were paving that road, he came out there and, uh, he said, I had to sit there a lot. And I said, you, you just need to go up to Bayle Street and access seventy-five. That's that, right? Anyway.
I think the people would be happy if we put that up, especially on Carlisle Road.
Well, you know, there's a mirror there, but I, uh, I don't really trust that mirror, 'cause I'm not sure how far up the road it's looking and all that. And just for your information, we finally got Carlisle Road finished, uh, got the edge stripe, white edge stripe on the sides, uh, week four last. And, uh, so, uh, we came in under budget, so, uh. Sir?
So it's a way we lack it?
Yeah, it's always been used, so, uh. And, uh, Mr. Luther, the county engineer, he's been sending you, uh, a file and balance on it in a short period of time. Talked to him today about that.
Yeah, he mentioned to me the day that he was getting close.
Yeah, I told you about what man he did and it'll be about the same amount. If I got any question, uh.
Thank you.
No, sir, thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
The thing I have, Mayor, is, uh, overlooked, uh, adding Jamie Jones to the, the initial terms of the night. Be add, bring him up, put him on the two seventeen on the Agger Center. And, uh, that's all I have.
Great.
This is, I think, we're gonna have to make a decision on something here where we've been in touch with AMIC and our last, last administration, when they built the bicycle trail stuffed around through the Agger Center and build the dreams and put the woods and everything, it was time that we're gonna have to be responsible for it. If it's gonna be on our property. So we contacted AMIC and had them come, actually, they did a walk-through or ride-through on the whole trail. And I have a letter, basically, from him, and I'd be glad to read it if you want me to, basically stated, it says, I'm writing to you today as an AMIC loss control representative, a recent loss control visit was made to the city of Ransville, March the ninth, with the purpose of reviewing the existing bicycle trail. Located in property of Northeast Agger Business Center, says my goal is to assist you in any way I can with safety and liability issues for the city of Ransville, Mayan County. And he wrote back and said, based upon observations made during my visit, my recommendation is as follows. I recommend that any special recreation area such as bike trails, skateboard parks, climbing walls, E T C be reviewed and designed and installed by a professional that are educated in the subject. Improperly designed tracks can result in dangerous situations for users of the track and subjects of the municipality to additional liability issues. Says, for example, improperly designed tracks can result in erosion in places like turns that create unsafe scenarios for users of the trail. Another concern is the inflammation of obstacles within the trail. If these obstacles are not engineered to specs for their specifically intended use, these obstacles may not be able to structurally withstand repeated use, rendering them dangerous for users. Says having a professional who is familiar with the intended purpose designed the trail can help in mitigating liability issues that can arise from a poorly implemented course. And he left his number for us to call if we had any questions. So we're gonna have to make a decision if that's gonna stay. If it is, we're gonna have to have somebody look at it and make sure it's safe enough for that or go away with it. How much it gonna cost us?
That's a good question. Didn't, yeah, didn't he explain something else, uh, about it, about something about the two trees there? Between the trail and Alex, you know, we done something, had to cut down a bunch of stuff and.
Yeah, there was, there was some tree problems.
I know there was a conversation somewhere.
Uh, there was, there was multiple tree problems in it, too close when you're making turns, there's the trees in the way. In, in, you know, it, I guess it's more like a, um, like a motocross type, except for bikes, where they're riding real fast and a lot of turns and jumps and stuff. And so he was looking at it from the standpoint that this was, uh, pretty dangerous. Uh, you know, it could be, somebody could get hurt real bad on it, uh, especially with all the trees around it. And, uh, his, his thoughts was that it needs to be re-engineered, uh, somebody's gotta take care of it every day. If a limb falls in it or hangs down and somebody runs into it and they don't have safety glasses on or whatever, that punches an eye out, then it's a, it's gonna be a problem for us. And so that's the reason they, they recommended that we probably do away with it, uh, unless we wanna put a lot more money into it. So.
When you say do it away with it, you talking about just block it off, not, not be responsible for it, or what?
Yes, just do away with the, I mean, lack, and, and, and here's, for instance, um, they ride and they go across the roads.
Right.
You know, and he says that is totally, uh, you know, really, really dangerous. Because if somebody's not noticing, somebody comes across the road on bicycle real fast, then they can get run over, you know? And even though there're bike signs there, that don't mean that somebody's gonna stop for a bike that they don't even see coming that just shoots out the road. They're running real fast.
But my concern is to not spend any more money than what you already have, just block it off with the sign up says, this is not city's responsibility, whatever, if you go hurt. And leave it like that.
Well, if you just do that for the signs, it's not the city's responsibility if somebody suddenly gets hurt.
You gotta go in there and take all the signs down and knock down all the jumps and take all the, you gotta, you just gotta.
I never been there, so.
Well, that's what you'd have to do to do away with it.
I don't wanna spend any more money than we have to.
Okay. All right. Whoa, discuss that first.
That's all I have, man.
Okay, uh, Ross?
Uh, Mayor, what I'm gonna bring up tonight is the updated pay scale.
Okay.
And, uh, basically what that is, all the department heads, um, based, were put on salary, you made a committee to overlook this. Myself and Councilman Byram and, uh, Councilman Freeman, so we looked over the pay scale and, and we're gonna go ahead and, uh, bring it up in a motion, I think we're gonna pass that.
Uh, I also, I got, hold on, I got a comment on that. Me and Chief talked about this, pay scale and stuff, and we've decided not gonna have a, a captain anymore position. What do y'all think about that?
Well, this don't have anything to do with the position, this is about the department heads. It don't have anything to do with the position.
Right, but on the old scale and the new scale position, we still have showing captain position. And we don't want captain anymore.
We'll just take it out, we'll trash it out.
I just want investigators, patrolman, sergeant, assistant chief and the chief.
Well, then you need to run that up with any department.
Not.
For what? Whatever. If you wanna do away with it, I ain't got nothing to do with pay scale or whatever. This is all about department heads, you ain't talking about department yet.
Well, no.
We can, we can remove that, but.
Hey, we can review that either.
Yeah, we can remove that, however, if you don't want to.
Any more questions? Okay. Next thing I have, Mayor, is, uh, we need two desktop computers at the fire department. Uh, we have one right now and it's our training computer, uh, for Chief Wright. Uh, he's our new safety coordinator, he needs that computer and we need the two computers, um, for Jason, the recurrent tension coordinator, 'cause he is doing outstanding job on that, he's, he's saving us money. And also, um, for the captain's office, so that way, uh, we'll be squared away on that. Costs on that, it's like six sixty-seven, so, the entry, but for both of them, both of them. And, uh, if you don't elaborate on any of that, Chief, you're more than welcome to.
Well, the computer was replaced and it's just been looking along for several years now, we've, uh, worked on it, done it multiple times. And last time, uh, Robert came out, he said, we'd be better off just to replace the computer, 'cause it's just, it's just old and outdated. It's always trouble.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Okay, you got anything?
Uh, just interested to hear you took care of, the only thing was just hiring Mr. Long here.
All right, appreciate it. Will?
That's what Austin took care of.
What about Sam? Sam?
Kind of business, we're doing wide open and filled dreams, having a great time, awesome.
All right.
Going on as we speak, going on as we speak.
Yeah, about that. Okay, we'll take, uh, about ten minutes. Okay, we'll take uh, about ten minutes.